It is now six o'clock. I will call the special meeting. It's Monday, November the 2nd, 2015, 6:00 PM, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first will be the reevaluation of HRB COA 15-57. Ron Langdon, 202 South Third Street. Councilman Hagan, you have the floor.
Yes, since I made the motion at the table, so we have a chance to look at it, I guess I'll lead the discussion. What I wanted to do was listen to the tran-- not the transcript, but listen to the recording of the meeting, so Barbie provided that. And I understand some of the councilmen may have had some trouble listening to that, so just to kind of recap. It was about a 50-minute discussion, and again, the reason I wanted to listen to it because it was a three to two vote, and I really wanted to hear what the two people who voted against it, what their concerns were. And it kind of centered around the size of the overall process of overall project, and also this loggia, the walkway connecting the two. There was some discussion about the actual materials of construction, but didn't seem to be any problem with any of that, of the addition. Now, this is an addition to the house, swimming pool, garage, and then the walkway between the two, and so forth and so on. So, I guess, but the, listening to it and going back and reading the historic manual, the two who were opposed to it, there was never a motion made to disapprove it, and they never really cited a specific verse and chapter. And Tim, you're correct that they're wrong, but if we vote to overturn the recommendation, we have to cite some chapter and verse in the historic manual.
Right.
So, I guess, to cut to the chase, I accept the feeling of the two members, they kept saying it's too big, it's overwhelming, and they used certain words. And I go back to the, and it's in our minutes that I had the manual there, too. If you look at NC 3 and NC 4, it talks about designing construction so that the building height, directional emphasis, scale, massing, and volume reflect the architectural context established by surrounding structures, which I take to be the surrounding houses. And in NC 4, it says, "Make sure that the scale of new construction does not conflict with the historic character of the neighborhood." And when I stand on John Fitch and look at that backyard, it's going to take up the whole yard, it's going to be a much larger scale than the other houses on that, in that neighborhood. So, to me, it's based on this, based on my interpretation of these two requirements, it doesn't meet these requirements. The scale is too large, such that it conflicts with the historic character of the neighborhood, and it does not reflect the architectural context established by surrounding structures. So, based on that, I would be inclined to overturn the recommendation of the historical review board.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
And I respect what you've just researched, but, once again, before, I believe, they even probably came before the HRB, they had architectures come and, architecture come and gather information, give them a skillful knowledge of how this would be done. I just think that, one, if we overturn something like this, then what about the rest of the people that live in the historical district that have pools that may or may not be adequate for the homes? There are pools that may not fit where they live at, there's a couple that I won't go on record with. But if the HRB, if they decided that they approved it, I just can't see, and the money that these people put in to have someone from out of state come in and work up a plan to make sure it was feasible and within the historical review points, how could we overrule that and then set them back from doing what they want to do? It is hard to live in that district. You are told, you know, what you can, cannot do. It is your home, but in retrospect, I mean, you still have to follow certain guidelines. But I would just like to see more than, you know, two people that didn't go with it. What about Hope? What did Hope say? You know, why, if she was against it, wouldn't she have documented something?
I couldn't.
I just, I think that, and then to know that, you know, Councilman Francis really didn't understand the vote, so, I mean, I just, I don't think that this is right. I do not think this is right.
You don't think it's right in what respect? Not to uphold the HRB, or?
To uphold their decision.
You think you should or should not?
We should uphold it.
I just want to make that clear.
Who are we to go and tell someone that, you know, after they've gotten, they've invested this money to have this plan done, then they went in front of the HRB to have it reviewed, and they voted to approve it, and then we go back and say, "Well, I just don't think that we should do this."
I agree with you, Councilman Hope, and I think the council should approve it. Because if you go back and do some research, probably, maybe use a property, probably arbitrary aspect in some location here in Borstown. So, I think we should approve it. I agree with you, Councilman Hope.
Councilman, please.
I went down and looked at property, I knew his property, and I was a kid, worked on his property. You got a lot of, I don't know, a lot of two wells there that are historical significant, possibly, that are covered up there that would be destroyed. Plus, you got an American elm, a very big, healthy American elm, that will be destroyed in this endeavor, and another tree, I think it's a chestnut, that's going to be removed. Nobody's mentioned the trees, it will totally change the landscape of that area, with that American elm and another tree done. Now, but nobody's ever mentioned elm.
Did they mention that as part of the, I kind of remember them mentioning the trees as part of the?
There was some discussion in the, there was discussion when you listened to it, that the trees were meant to be removed. But I would just point out, Bill, that I don't think we can overturn the recommendation based on the fact that we don't want trees to be taken down.
I thought that was our idea, to keep the historical, the texture of the historical, if you remove those trees, it's going to change the overall concept of that area.
We have to, we have to point out a paragraph in the historic review guidelines if we're going to overturn their recommendations, some guideline that what they want to do is violating.
Right, so, turn it, but, of course, you've got to have a good reason to turn down, to turn down this. And what you indicated, just because something in your opinion, the pool is maybe too big or something, I don't think that's enough.
Has the tree board approved the destroying of the?
Let me finish, and I'll let you go ahead. And I don't think, what you indicated, I don't think you held no facts to overturn. Am I right?
Well, that's, that's kind of a, that's a factor that should weigh into how you vote, whether it's sufficient or not. I think what you have to do is you have to, as Councilman Hagan pointed out, I think what you have to do is you have to cite and say that it has violated these, in your all's opinion, it has violated these, you know, design standards, which are, and I think you said NC 12 and NC?
No, or 3 and 4.
3 and 4. And if you, if you are of a mind that this is not in keeping with the character of the area, which is what I think that the two people that voted are against it, you know, what I gleaned from is they were saying that the scale and the character of this was out of scale and out of character for the historic district in the neighborhood, then you can, and I, I think NC 9 and NC 12 also apply here, by the way, if you're wanting to cite some, but, you know, I think that you can find the, depending on your opinion on that issue, you can find that these have violated some of these design guidelines, or you can say that it's within scale. This is, you know, the historic district is, a lot of these things are not, is it seven or eight? Seven's okay, eight's too many. It's not like that, it's not a definitive standard. It's more of a beauty in the eye of the beholder, and especially when you start talking about scale and character. What might be out of scale to one person might be totally appropriate to another. And so, I think that's more, in a roundabout way, that's, Councilman Lidian, that's what I'm trying to say, is that that's more of an issue of opinion.
That's all, faith, faith.
Yeah, and I think that.
It's about facts, so.
Well, there's, I'm not sure that you find a lot of facts in the recommendation for approval, I think it's opinion on how they meet or do not meet these criteria. I don't think it's factually correct, I think it's more of a assessment and opinion of what, of whether they meet those criteria or not.
So, Councilman Buckman's opinion would be cited under 9 and 12, the characteristics of the neighborhood, basically.
Well, let me address what Councilman Hope was saying about the wells. Those wells would be an issue inside or outside the historic district, okay? And I think that's an issue outside, and we had this discussion prior to the meeting, I think it's an issue outside of the, what we're discussing tonight. Yes, it's a concern, but it probably ought to be addressed. That would be a concern if it were on the property outside of the historic district, if there were, you know, if there was some sort of characteristic of those wells that caused some concern, they would cause concern whether they're historic or not.
I guess what I'm trying to do is get the numbers of, you know, you cited four and five?
Three and four.
Three and four. And Councilman Buckman, I guess, his sighting would be under, what, 9 and 12? Is that kind of what you're?
Well, 12, 12 is more along the lines of what I was talking about as well. 9, I'm not so sure, but 12 would be.
So, is that, that's kind of, to get an idea of where we're standing, is that kind of where you're at, Mr. Buckman? Councilman Simpson, Councilman Williams, comment?
Well, as I looked through this, and I really couldn't find any, to find the facts, I don't remember really seeing them, but it just says, "Review findings," and it mentions garage doors, fencing, HVAC, roofing, stuff like that, and I don't remember any information noting wells, and he knows property better than I do, and that type of stuff, and, so, I don't know. I don't know that we should not support it because two people are against it.
Can I say something? So, shouldn't the HRB, shouldn't they have mentioned the wells that that was going to be?
Yeah, no.
You know, I have trust in the committee itself, so shouldn't they have mentioned an issue? That would have been my thing, is to mention, "Well, we have wells on that property, hold on." Or, "The trees, that's going to be an issue." That's what I think they would do, is say, "Okay, you know, this is this, this, and this." So, I don't think I can approve that. Now, if that was the information from the ones that did not say anything or disapproved it, then, okay, I understand that, but knowledgeable, that he knows that those are on the property, but this is a, this is a committee that's well-versed, and I'm sure that they would have brought something up, especially Hope.
They, if I may, they did talk about the well, and that it was going to be filled in, and it was like, nobody, nobody commented on it, nobody said anything. It's on the drawing, so there was, and they also talked about the trees that are coming down. There was discussion, and there was no hue and cry, or there was no motion to not approve because of the trees. So, yeah, they were both suspicious.
Councilman Simpson?
Well, of course, I did have some problems listening to it, but I heard most of it when I heard it, you know, as Roland said, they talked about different, different issues, the materials. One thing that I talked, that they were talking quite a bit about, the green space, you know, it sounds like to me they addressed a lot of this that, she said, probably that they should have addressed, and, you know, they know more about, they have pictures, they have other stuff that I don't have, that I obviously know there's why we shouldn't go along with.
I'm going to just, maybe I want to find some comments on what some of the other people said. I respect the fact that somebody spent a lot of money, and it's a nice-looking addition, but I go back to, we make our decisions based on, not how much money somebody spent, not what their intentions are, but we have to, we make our decisions based on the historic review guidelines. That's what we are required to make our decisions on, and that's why, you know, I'm looking at these page and paragraphs pretty closely. It's not an emotional decision, it's not a, what do we want to do based on how we think, it's, we have to stick with the, with the facts. And that's what I'm making my, my opinion on, is that. And yes, it's, as Tim pointed out, these are, these are lots of gray areas in here, whether something meets the character of the neighborhood, or what the heck does that, it's not like if you put in a certain window, you have to put a certain kind of window in, that's pretty, that can be pretty exacting, but some of it is the way things look and the view of it. It, that's, that's why we, that's why we vote, I guess, so.
I'll adjut a motion regarding the COA number 15-57.
I'm going to go and allow somebody to make a motion to approve it.
I'll put the motion, I'll put the motion on the floor to approve, I don't have all the sentences here.
Does COA 1557?
Yeah.
With the recommendations as made by the historic review board?
Yes.
I'll second. Motion by Councilman Lidian, second by Councilman Williams. Discussion, there's a motion on the floor to approve COA 15-57 and all the HRB recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
None.
202.
42, thank you.
42. Votes 42, ayes, have it, motions adopted. Approval for the minutes of 10:27, 2015, regular council meeting, and I entertain the motion for the minutes. Do I have time to look at the minutes? You usually don't pick them up.
It's necessary.
In a special, in a special.
Mayor, I'll make the motions, approve the minutes from 10:27, 15.
Motion by Councilman Hagan? Second. Second by Councilman Williams. Discussion. Motion on the floor, Councilman Hagan, to approve the minutes of 10:27, 2015, regular council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, have it, motions adopted. The declaration of sole source automated meter reading, tackle this?
And Mayor, my suggestion, or my suggestion is that be removed from the agenda. You'll see a tab where it says, "City Attorney," it's an email that I sent out to the council just saying that I've talked to the auditor, city's auditor, and there's some, some problems with proceeding forward with the declaration of sole source. She and I both feel more comfortable if it's a bid, and if there's just a single person bidding, then that would satisfy the requirement. Long and the short of it is, is that we have not adopted the model procurement code, which allows for a sole source determination. State law says if you don't adopt that, that model procurement code, that you're supposed to bid everything over $20,000. Again, after talking to the auditor, we both feel more comfortable that this be bid. I've talked with Jeff Mills about this today, and he understood, and will proceed forward. So, it's my suggestion that that be taken off the agenda.
We got a vote on that. Is it okay with you guys to strike that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next one is the declaration of repair for the cable head-in areas, and the home, I guess that's you?
Yeah.
But now, keep it down here where we are.
Well, I just wanted to answer any questions you all might have. We're in need of replacing an older multiplexing device, it's kind of central to all the video. And so, it being the center of everything, when it gets impacted, we, it affects a lot of customers. So, that's, that's what we're, we're recommending is the, is the Eris product, which Frankfurt uses, and they're happy with it. Since ours is kind of, is aging, and that company since has been purchased by Imagine Communication, which some of the engineers that we're used to talking and supporting us have been let go, so we seem like, it seems like it's kind of a good time with all the problems we've, we've been having with it, and the age that we move on to a more stable Eris platform.
So, what this is, in language terms, this is the freezing and tiling that we've been having, even where that's supposed to?
That's correct.
Cure that, is the freezing tiling, and then you'll notice when they talk, their lips are here, but they're, yeah. So, with this piece of equipment, it is supposed to have a big effect, or not even, if not a cure for this, correct?
That's correct. I mean, we still have other issues that we deal with, but this affects a lot of people at once, and so it's just kind of the central piece. That's been in the trouble, we had to go through a sequence of resetting it and things like that every Friday, and so it's not, it's one of those things, you know, it's like a telephone that, you know, you never reset and you restart. So, it's kind of starting to be problematic.
And when I was talking to Jeff today about emergency, you know, typically, again, discussions with auditor, typically, emergency is tornado's come through town, you've had a storm, something like that. When I talked to Jeff and I said, you know, "What's, what's the justification for emergency?" He was citing several things. First of all, you know, there might be a catastrophic failure, in other words, if this goes down, you know, we're not talking about tiling, we're talking about major issues. There was an issue of complaints, it affects the customer base. He feels like that if, and I'm summarizing what he told me, that if you don't move quickly, that you're going to jeopardize both the quality of your product, and then the number of subscribers that you have, and the financial viability of the, of the system. So, he feels like that this needs to be done quickly and completely, so that you don't, you don't continue to have, and Tracy can speak to the level of volume, he said, Tracy can talk to the volume of complaints that they're getting, service calls and things of that nature, and the, you know, given the competition, the effect that it would have on the customer base and the viability of the system. It's your all's determination whether that rises to the level of emergency.
And why, refresh my memory on, why don't we do an emergency, why don't we just buy the equipment?
You have to bid it, you either have to bid it or declare an emergency and buy it.
But that's a separate topic from this meter reading.
Yes. Yes, what we're, yeah.
Okay, so, so it's, I'm happy.
The one, you had only one person sells the product. The other one is, we have to move quickly. And so, in both cases, you want to say, "We don't want to bid, we want to just buy."
But the second one, this emergency with the cable, when we're talking about now, there's only one vendor for that? That's a question.
There, there's Cisco, I think, Maxon, and I think RGB, those are the three primary vendors. But the Eris, we, like I said, we have recognition from Frankfurt and others that have been moved, that have moved from the RGB platform, and has been doing a lot better. And it's also, in terms of, we've been sampling the Eris device in the head-in, so we're happy with it, and how it works, we think that would solve the problem for us.
Have we had a vote from them?
Correct.
$207,000 and $975,000.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Now, what's the turnaround time on getting this repaired?
I'm thinking within, you know, within four weeks, I believe.
Well, just so I understand, if we had time to get a vote from them, why didn't we have time to get a vote from them?
RBG, is it RGB?
Yes.
From talking to Jeff, they haven't provided the quality of tech service that is required, and he's wanted to go with another, another company, and I don't think the prices are that far off, and I don't vote in that, but.
Well, I just want to try to understand, we're being asked to declare an emergency because there's not time to bid it, but there is time to bid it. We just want to use these people because we like their equipment better. That's a question.
Well, and, well, I think there's a matter of urgency in moving forward from, from the RGB device.
Then why don't we just justify on that, on that, rather than?
The RBG device, according to what Jeff was telling me, they, it has to be reset on a weekly basis, is that correct?
Yeah, I understand it on one, I understand this is the equipment on one.
Right, but that's, that is part of the emergency. This, the RBG equipment that we're using at is so old, and it's not, and it's not operating in its function, so we have to reset it each week, and when we miss it, it, there on, there again is a problem. That's, I guess that is the emergency part, is what Jeff was explaining to me.
And we also have been trying out the Cat 1000, which is what we've been trying to go to, and so we have, we don't have the pieces to make the whole transition, so this is kind of, we have a small piece of that device already, so it's going to be uniform to go with, continue with theirs than it is to, you know, try out another product and see how that, like I said, we have a good recommendation from Frankfurt and others that have been using the, that platform.
I guess I understand all that. It seems to me it would be simple just to put all that in the memo to us, explain why we want to go with these, rather than to declare an emergency that we don't have time to, to bid, which I think is what we're being asked to do.
Well, yeah, this is, this is, what this is all about is, and understand that if you've got three bids, and one was higher in the middle, not below us, and you like their equipment, that's what I'm hearing here, is we want to go with the middle bid or the higher bid, which we did just this last week on some matter. What this is, is that this is saying, "We don't want to put it out for bid, it's an emergency, we need to do this quickly." The bid process, you know, a couple of weeks, probably, minimum?
You have a, you have a timing for the bid, Larry?
We already have the bid, we've got it, this is what we want.
But to do the bid process?
Yeah, but you got to bid it and let other people provide you bids.
Yeah.
Not if we are, not if we are justifying using this equipment based on technology and technical reasons, we want to use this for technical reasons, because we like their equipment. This is what we want to do. We don't want anybody else's, even if they bid it lower, do we?
That's true, but in order to be able to do the bid process, you can't have, you can't just use a, get in a piece of equipment because you like it, if you declare an emergency because the situation requires it, or you have to go through the bid process.
Why don't we declare this is the only equipment that meets our specifications, which it is, isn't it?
But if there are, if there are more than one supplier, you'd have to allow those different suppliers to bid.
So, we need to declare?
Are there different suppliers for this equipment?
There was three.
Yes, there was RGB, Cisco, and Eris.
I'll stop, I'm done. I have a question for you, home. Time of the essence, you indicated to Councilor Roland that it takes about four weeks once you, once the council approved this bid, what's the timeframe on receiving all this equipment?
Yeah, I don't, I'm assuming it would be less than four weeks to get it all implemented, because, like I said, in terms of, we have one of the Cat 1000, and so the rollout would be a lot faster than it would be from scratch, you know, scratch. But that's, that's what I believe, you know, within four weeks, I think we should be, be, should be able to get it replaced.
Is the four weeks until you're receiving, implementing, and letting go?
Yes.
Well, uh, I'd feel more comfortable if it was bid. But if you, if you saying that this is the only one that you're going to accept anyhow, I don't want to bid. Now, unless you can word it word that X company has the same equipment, I, I, you've kind of got me confused. Uh, you know, I can buy a Ford car, and I go to Conroy, and I go, Lord, won't tell you the Ford car? I don't know, I don't know the equipment. You're the only one that knows the equipment.
Well, Eris is a, a company that we buy a lot of different, like, internet equipment from, the moments that we get there from Eris.
Yeah, it's, it, it's not a different vendor per se, it's, it's manufacturer, um, so it's, um, actually Ford versus Chevy or something like that, because it, but it's the same truck. But, um, so it's, that, for the purpose of, I guess the urgency is what we're asking in terms of trying to move this faster and, um, and getting it changed out.
Yeah, I think that what we're talking about doing is speeding the process up by two weeks. That's where I was going, two weeks. That, in order to keep from, from, to, to solve the problems as quickly as possible to reduce the customer complaints and everything. Uh, again, it, the, um, just to be sure, the state law's very clear, it says you must take bids if it's $20,000 or more, period, or you can declare an emergency because time is of the essence. That's really your two options. You know, if, if you get bids and you get seven bids and six of them, you know, are just unacceptable, and you knew they were going to be, you still have to bid. That's just the law, and that's, sometimes that's why people go with the Model Procurement Code. I'm not certainly sure that I would do that, it's very, it looks like it's very cumbersome, but, um, that's just the hand that we're dealt. Um, you know, we either have to declare an emergency or bid.
This piece of equipment is about the size of a pizza box, but that's kind of what I've been looking at, and La Homme's been up there, it is 8 and 9 o'clock at night working and trying to keep this going. And of course, they talk way up here, but from what I'm understanding, and the reason of the declaration of emergency is this piece of equipment that we're using now could actually lay down and just freeze up and nothing, then we're totally out of TV, right? That's the digital process.
They're afraid that it's in the process of doing it right now.
And if it does, then, then we have a problem with providing our customers, uh, cable customers, a product that we promised that to provide. And, you know, and I realize things happen, but we know that, when staff knows that there's a problem like this, it's, uh, they've been working diligently on trying to figure out what to do, so. Uh, and there, in a sense, uh, I take it is the Declaration of Emergency to get this piece of pizza box, piece of equipment in there, and I couldn't believe something that big, that, that's small, costs that much money, but it's, it's, uh, it's vital to the head end.
Mayor, I'm in order. I'd like to, uh, make a motion, a Declaration of Emergency, Repair for Cable Head In, be awarded to Eris in amount of $207,975. And I yield the floor for a second.
One second.
Motion by Councilman Williams for Declaration of Emergency, Repair for the Cable Head In, to buy a piece of equipment made by Eris in the amount of 2,000, correction, $207,975. And it's second by Councilman Buckman. Discussion?
Uh, one question. La Homme, I don't see the word Eris anywhere on this quote. Is that the manufacturer or the, who is Eris?
Uh, Eris, actually, is CAP 1000 is made by Eris. TDC sells the Eris product.
Okay, so the CAP 1000 ORB is an Eris product?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we've gone through a pretty extensive discussion here. As justification, I would assume the, you know, the catastrophic, potential catastrophic failure, the...
Cable system.
Yeah, and the customer complaints and the, the, you know, the potential damage that we could do to our customer base. I assume that's all included in your motion.
Yes, sir. We are business.
That is true.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is adopted, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.